To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Evans. Counselor Kibowski.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Paterna. Mayor Penn.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. For the mayor's remarks this evening, I'd like to address the fact that we're continuing to work on the budget, and we also had a recognition of a local business here in town that received a grant, a $10,000 grant for their business over an evergreen walk, leaps and bones, great business. They applied for a grant and they're expanding their company. So that was exciting. So there's plenty of exciting stuff, and this is Memorial Day this month. So please keep that in mind, and I'll be reporting more about that at towards the end of the month. Adoption of minutes, please. Counselor Gamble.
Move to...
I'm sorry, adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Is there any additions, corrections, additions moving this, a moving of anything on the agenda adding to the agenda? Not hearing any, not seeing any? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Number six is communications and reports from the town manager, Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I was asked to meet with the Metro Hartford Alliance to discuss the impacts of the warehouse and distribution moratorium that has been put in place by Planning and Zoning Commission. They've heard from many developers who are interested in the town of South Windsor, and as a result of the moratorium, they have either decided to put on hold their projects or not move forward. Both the Metro Hartford Alliance and Advanced CT have offered their services to planning and zoning as well as to the town to ensure that they conduct a data-driven review of the regulations and make their decisions moving forward based on regional and national standards and facts. I was very appreciative that they would make that offer to us, and I think they were very interested in hearing kind of the reasoning behind those decisions moving forward. So very hopeful that those, that the Planning and Zoning and Metro Hartford Alliance and Advanced CT will be working together on that. I did pass that information along to our town planner, Michelle Leip, who I believe has already reached out to them. So that's good news. I had the opportunity to tour ESI this last week. I was very impressed with the breadth and depth of knowledge and ability this business not only brings to South Windsor, but also the state and the region. I was very appreciative of the time Mr. Mitchell took to show me around, and the partnership that we have with our many town departments and them was actually very impressive, and I was very appreciative of that. I've had the opportunity to work with the Strategic Planning Committee over the last couple of months. We are currently in the process of looking for consultants to work with us on doing the strategic planning and helping provide a framework that will not only capture the public's input, but also synthesize it into a usable format. Just so that the council is aware, I wanted to make you guys all aware that the committee will probably be coming to you in the not-too-distant future, looking for some funding to be able to fund that consultant. I would probably be making a recommendation that we could take that funding from contingency at this point. We've made it past kind of the snow season, so that's kind of the real key piece, but I think we'll be fine to be able to move some funds from contingency to cover that cost when we are ready for that point. So just to put it on your radar and be aware of that. Lastly, I've been spending a lot of time following and tracking the state budget, and actually even as of today, we've been looking at what's going on. Right now, what we're looking at, the state, I think as all of you are aware, the big piece that we've been watching most closely is the car tax cap on the mil rate for automobiles. Right now, what's being proposed is a 32.46 mil rate, which from our rough numbers, looks like it may save residents somewhere between $20 and $50 for the year for residents within town. Additionally, there is included at this point the reimbursement. Now whether the state actually puts that into action is another story, but there is included the reimbursement in the paperwork and the proposal for the budget moving forward. So with that reimbursement, we won't have a major impact, a negative impact on our town budget overall. So I think we'll be okay with that the way it is. So we are watching it closely, and of course, nothing is in stone until they actually vote. So I think there may be a vote tonight, with the Senate voting tomorrow possibly. So we'll keep track of that. And then, just as all of you remember, we are talking about doing a special meeting in order to put our budget in place once the state gets theirs done. So we're talking about doing that possibly next week.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Does anyone have any questions for our town manager? Counselor Gamble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. How are you?
Good.
So what is the ESI tour? I'm not familiar with the ESI is.
Environmental Services Incorporated. They're a local business within our community that conducts environmental remediation when there's a spill of some type or an environmental hazard within, on the roadway or something of that nature. And they invited me to come over and take a tour of their facility and see the work that they do. So it was very good.
Oh, good. Thanks.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions for the town manager? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you.
Moving on to public input, item number seven. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on items on the agenda? It shall not exceed 30 minutes. When I recognize you, you approach the lectern, give your name and your address, and you shall avoid personal attacks or imputing or alleging improper motives to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. If it's not an item on the agenda, I will be asking you to wait until item 15 for any item that is not on the agenda. Good evening.
Joe Kennedy, 81 Allison Drive. We thank the councilors, commissioners, and the board members for their volunteerism. I applaud Counselor Kozakowski's effort to allow local preference for property leases. It is the farmer-friendly thing to do. We thank the 16,000 Connecticut citizens who served in the armed forces, both active and reserves. I'd like to give a shout-out to my two nephews, Brendan Kennedy, who's at Reinstein Air Force Base in Germany, and Danny Kennedy, who's in Westover. Please support your local legion, VFWs, Army-Navy Clubs, and military nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public input on items on the agenda?
Good evening, Audrey Del Nikki. It's unfortunate that we have a skeleton town council tonight. I'm here again asking why not one counselor from the majority party will not answer my email that was sent on April 11th, and also handed out to all counselors at the April 18th meeting. As Counselor Paterna stated, it's too bad he's not here to hear it again, I'm sure he's watching. I would like to address Counselor Gamble's concerns. I would just say that I think there have been many efforts to reach out to these individuals to express our concerns, and I think it's up to them to address those concerns at this point. Thank you. You said all were reached out to. Again, I have stated at previous meetings that this is a false statement.
Ms. Del Nikki?
Well, I want to make sure I have attention to people, and I will use the word now, it's a lie. What is stopping any of you from responding to my question as to why I have been denied, not once, but twice, to an appointment to a commission? You cannot on one hand ask for volunteers for boards and commissions and then deny volunteers at the same time. Not responding to residents' emails is not only rude, but it's just plain wrong. If you believe in honest, open government, then a person has a right to know why they are denied an appointment. This is not the high standards that Counselor Evans referred to at the April 4th meeting. Hopefully she's watching at home. You all are showing you do not have high standards. If I had a limbo bar right now, you would not be able to fit under it, as the bar is so low as touching the ground. You are not embracing the high standards you tout. I am now asking, not the third time, but now the fourth time, which includes my email, why I was denied an appointment as an alternate to the Inland Wetlands Conservation Commission, and also being denied as a full member to the Blighted Property Appeals Board. You have my phone number, you have my email address, and my home address. You all know where I live. None of you have an excuse to not answer my emails, or any emails, phone calls, or sale mail from any resident in this town. What has happened to honest, open, and transparent government in South Windsor? The people have a right to that answer. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lopez, for your attention.
Does anyone else like to speak of public input in any item on the agenda? Going once, twice, public input on any items on the agenda, and three times. Does anyone like to speak on any items on the agenda? Not seeing any, we'll move on to item number eight, adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll take these one at a time?
Yes, please.
Be resolved that South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular town council meeting of March 21st.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Additions, corrections? Not seeing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular town council meeting of April 18th, 2022.
Is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Gamble. Is there any additions, corrections, deletions, discussion? Not hearing any, not seeing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the public hearing to receive citizen input on the proposed general government budget for the fiscal year 2022-23 of April 18th, 2022.
Is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Lopez. Is there any discussion, addition, corrections, deletions? Not hearing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. Thank you, Deputy Mayor King. And now we have item number nine, communications from liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible to the council. I'd like to take 9A, please. Who is the liaison for the walk-in wheelways? Do we have a liaison present? No. So I would like to ask Ms. Jenny Hall to come up and speak and give us a report for the walk-in wheelways. I got my fluorescent pink one on.
Good evening. Is it also I ask, is to ask the rest of the members to come up too?
I'm sorry?
Is it all right to ask the rest of the members to join me?
Oh, knock your socks off. Go ahead.
Thank you. We'll introduce ourselves more up here.
Sure. Come on up. It's so good to see your faces again.
Good evening, Mayor Pendleton and councilors. It really is good to be here and to see you all. I have with me Ken Sek, who's the secretary of the South Windsor Walk-in Wheelways, Bob Dickinson, who does a lot of the, he keeps us abreast of all the legislation and ongoings of anything bicycle that's happening in the state of Connecticut. Kim Noel promotes any activities we have going on, and Christine Kylie is the co-chair of South Windsor Walk-a-Wheelway, as well as I'm the co-chair of South Windsor Walk-in Wheelways. And just for those of you who do not know who Walk-in Wheelways is, is that we're a group of volunteers advocating for safer accommodations for bicycling and walking in the town of South Windsor. We also offer bicycle education, safety education, as well as host activities in the town of South Windsor. And we're very fortunate to have the support of the town council and many of the departments, including the police department. We just had two officers help with our bike program. But we have the support of many of the departments and agencies and organizations that are in our town, so we're very fortunate to be able to work with all those groups. One thing, the reason we're here today is May is National Bike Month, and we're here to celebrate the month of May and let you know what we're doing for the month of May. And we do have this beautiful Parks and Rec brochure that has all our activities posted in it. And if you look at page, for those of you when you go home, this is something you should keep when you get in the mail, because it has so many good things that are going on, not only for children, but for adults. And on page 54, you have biking and hiking, which is under Walk-in Wheelways. And one thing I just wanted to mention as part of Bike Month, we just finished a couple of weeks ago teaching the fourth grade bike program at Orchard Hill, and we have another one coming up in a couple of weeks at Eli Terry. And then we'll do the other two schools in the fall. And we're always looking for volunteers to help us with that program, and if anybody's interested in just coming to watch to see what it's like, it's a three-day program, and the kids love it. In fact, when we finish the program, they're always asking if we'll be able to offer that again in fifth grade. And we have also received a lot of good feedback from the parents as well. Other things that we're offering, actually, we just did this past Saturday, a Learn to Ride for Adults. We have a lot of adults in our community that have never had the chance or opportunity to ride a bike or learn how to ride a bike. And so this has worked out really well. We usually have anywhere from four to six adults each time, and then we'll follow up with some type of bicycle safety course after they've learned how to ride. Because we also will follow up with a few opportunities to practice riding until they're ready to really take part in those activities. I just wanted to let you know, so there's a women's bike skills workshop. We offered it for the first time last year, and this time we're offering it in two parts, and along with a bike ride, and that's on May 14th. And we have a women's Friday morning bike rides that we're going to try, which really can be open to anybody that's home and wants to join us for a 10-mile, 12-to-15-mile bike ride in South Windsor. And that is May 13th and the 20th. And then we'll start in June, our Thursday evening bike rides at the Connecticut Valley Brewing Company. There's always great food and, of course, refreshments to partake in. Afterwards, we meet at quarter of six, and our ride takes off at six, and it's for anybody that just wants to de-stress at the end of the day, the end of the day, and ride down to Main Street, they're on quiet roads, and/or anybody that's really just starting off to ride bikes or just wants to get out and ride a bike. You know, sometimes we'll see some sets. We were lucky, one time we saw a rainbow. You know, sometimes we'll ride over the Bissell Bridge. So it's a great ride every Thursday night, and it's a good way to meet up with other, you know, make new friends. I just wanted to mention as well, as you can see on the back of our shirts, sadly, are a bicycle-friendly community. And in 2020, we renewed our application. We're at the bronze level. We have four years, every four years, we have the opportunity, we can do it sooner if we want, but every four years, we need to renew our application if we want to continue to be designated as a bicycle community, bicycle-friendly community. And we're hoping to improve, or, you know, move up to the next level, which is silver. And I gave each of you a little report card of where we stand right now, what kind of initiatives we can take to become the silver level. And a couple of things that we are looking into is offering middle school and high school students either the chance to ride bikes with us and learn more about bicycle safety. We're also going to be working with the senior citizen. They want to provide them a Learn to Ride program, and most likely that will lead into bicycle safety. And we are working on designing a cross-town trail, which we hope will pick up soon as, you know, COVID kind of delayed things, but that would be another great, it's a six-point mile trail, and that'd be a great way to provide a safe passage for bicycling and walking for everybody in South Windsor, anybody that comes to visit us. And so just, oh, and the last thing I wanted to mention is, so that designation is from the League of American Bicycleists, and they just announced, I think it was like last week or two weeks ago, that Connecticut, they rank where the states stand in their bicycle safety, and Connecticut has moved up to 20, which is out of 50 states, which we had started at 42nd. And so we are moving up really well, and a lot of it is due to we have a Bike Walk Connecticut that helps advocate for new laws such as complete streets, passing three feet away from a bicyclist, and many other legislations they have in progress. Also, the Department of Transportation has allotted at least 2% of their budgets when they're improving roads to go towards, like whether it's bike lanes or expanding, you know, offering sidewalks, and then CROG, which, and right now, my mind has gone blank, maybe, my, yes, Capital Region Council, they also help a lot in our region in promoting bicycle safety and improving the infrastructure of our state. So I just wanted to recognize all those groups, and thank you for joining us tonight, and hopefully we'll see you at one of these events. Also, we do have some walk-in events, so I do want to make sure that you know that we have a sunset walk in July, on July 13th. And thank you so much. Take care.
Hang on.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, wait. Don't believe, we may have questions. Go ahead.
Yep. I also, because it's May, and as you saw this past weekend, how nice the weather is, so everybody's getting out to ride their bikes. And so I just wanted to point out two things. Make sure you're visible, you know, whether you're riding, wearing bright clothing, or at night, you make sure you're riding with a bike light so people can see you. And then also, wear a helmet. And I'm going to demo really quickly how to wear a helmet safely. And I'm going to do it based on, let's say you just bought a new helmet. A lot of times, the helmet, the dial that's on the back of the helmet is dialed to the tightest position. So what you should do is open it up, and that's counterclockwise, so it's as wide as you can be, it can be. Just a second. Place it on your head, tighten the dial clockwise until it's comfortable, but tight on your head. And then we use the two-finger roll, where you should have no more than two fingers between your eyebrows and the helmet when you put on the helmet. Also, when you go to strap up your helmet, you should make sure that the sides of the strap make a V with two fingers, and they're right underneath your ears, because if they're any longer, the straps can hang in front of your face, which will obstruct your view. And then the last thing is when you hook up the buckle underneath your helmet, to make sure it's no more than, it should be like two, at least two fingers of room, of space between the strap and your neck, so that it's comfortable if you need to yawn, and not too tight on your head. And then if you shake your head, your helmet shouldn't move on your head. And this is like one of the most important things to be wearing, because like if you broke a bone, that's, can heal, but a helmet protects your brain, your head, your brain, and that's the purpose of wearing the helmet. So anyways, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the, Counselor Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I love when you guys come up here in May. It makes me think of spring and bike riding, and getting out and doing all the things that come along with being outside. So I appreciate you coming out, and I love, look forward to your report. And I, but I do have a question about, you know, I see that you're bronze, and that's great. Do you have a plan to get to silver? Because I was looking at some of these things, and it looks like it's very difficult with the kind of roads we have here to make it so.
It is, and that's why we're encouraging that we, we are encouraging that we have more trails, or when roads are redone, we're always hoping that at the same time, like we have a complete streets law that was passed, and you're supposed to look at the whole road at the time when you're redoing a road to see if it meets, you know, so that everybody can use the road. It's not just for cars. It's for people crossing, walking, you know, because not, we don't always have sidewalks on all our roads. We have been encouraging to at least have sidewalks on the main connector roads. The neighborhoods usually they're quieter, and it'd be nice to be able, our big thing is connecting our community so that you, if there's sidewalks or bike lanes or wider shoulders, it would be easier. And multi-use trails, that's the big thing. If a multi-use trail could be put in, that is even better, because then it could be utilized both by bicyclists and pedestrians. And so we do promote all that stuff, or advocate it as far as much as we can. And then we're just trying to extend, reach out more with our bicycle safety education. So, but the infrastructure is a big thing that we need to work on in our town.
So I'm not on this committee, but is this something the Strategic Committee is looking as part of their goal to sort of promote this through the strategic plan?
Well, strategic planning is looking at this as well as a lot of other things. It's a much larger, broader scope for that planning.
Right, but you know, it's just one of the factors.
Certainly, they're looking at things that members of the community, like the Walk-in Wheelways Group, would want the community to implement and do moving forward to meet the needs of everybody. So certainly.
All right. Thanks.
And we do get a lot of requests from residents, you know, for safer places to ride, and especially when we take them out on bike rides, they love it and they want more. And so we're, and we're looking for volunteers to join our committee. We do meet once a month on the first Wednesday of the month at Parks Rec, and I didn't mention that we are a subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Commission. So we do work with them, and we're lucky, you know, so that's, we partner with them a lot for a lot of the activities that we offer. So thank you.
Great. Any other questions? I just have a few. I know that you came before us, goodness, maybe two years ago, concerning the cross-town trails under connecting various areas through the power lines and things. How is that? And has that been completed, or where are we at with that, or?
So currently, it is in the design phase. We do have the funding for it, but it has stalled, and we would like, yeah, part of the problem is, is EverSource has changed their departments a lot, and the people that we worked with have, are, there's new people in the position, so they're, I'm sure they're trying to get acclimated to what, you know, we're all doing, because it's just not we're all doing, because it's just not our town, it's other towns too, that are looking for ways to install trails on the, their Eversource, and the Eversource corridor is the word. Because as you can see, already know, our town is built up a lot. And we also have a lot of wetlands. So that was like primarily the area that was most likely to be able to put a trail in. And what was so good about this particular trail, where it starts on Clark, in the corner of Clark and Chapel Road and ends up in Neaterwiffer, is that a lot of neighbors, neighborhoods can connect to it. And there's already many trails that people have already connected to that corridor. So if there's a trail, it's going to be widely used, because people are looking for places to go. And if you, you know, perfect example is like the East Coast Greenway, or even, for example, the Bissell Bridge Trail. When, right now, we just have, we have bike lanes on Chapel and then down to Main, when we get down to Chapel past the Route 5, there are charles, although they are kind of faded. And also, when you get into Main Street, you can pick up the Bissell Bridge Trail. And then there's a Trail Windsor that's heading towards the Hartford. And Hartford is also completing the last couple of miles of the trail from Hartford, that we would be able to ride all the way down to the Plaza in Hartford, the Constitutional Plaza in Hartford, and take part in the, take part in the activities that they offer down there, or, or visit the city. And also, that'd be a great route for biking to work. So by extending our trail, Ellington is also considering building a trail through the Eversource Corridor to continue that trail, so that we connect to other towns. So not only do we try to connect our community, we're trying to connect to other towns. I mean, we're lucky we have access to Windsor and to Manchester at this point. But it'd be nice to be able to connect to a lot of the communities and just bike through.
You can go from Main Street to where in Manchester?
In Manchester, you can actually go all the way out to Hebron and then continue. And then you can also pick up the Hot, is it the Hot River Trail? Is that the Stone Dust Trail? Anyways, you can continue quite a ways out there. And I think we can also, I think we can connect to the Airline Trail. But I know that they're making all those connections happen. And, and like Simsbury, that trail, which is the Farmington River Trail, that goes all, Canal Trail, that goes all the way to New Haven, all the way up to the border of Massachusetts. Now, it's not totally completed, but it's, it's getting there. And so then Bloomfield is making more connections coming this way. So hopefully...
That sounds very exciting. And it's neat that all the communities are connected and folks can travel and go see other areas. That's really good. That's really good.
Yes.
And next question is, Mr. Maniscalco, with the complete streets and Ginny, is there anything that the town, that you need from the town to get to the silver? And if you do, please contact Mr. Maniscalco if we can help in any way.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You know, that would, to get you up to silver, if there's anything that we can do.
Okay.
Please let us know.
Yep. There's more work to be done with the complete streets. So yes, I'll reach out to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. I appreciate you.
Take care.
That's very exciting. Okay. Next, we're going to have, Council Evans is not here, but we will have a report concerning the Park and Recreation Facilities Committee.
Yes.
I probably not didn't say it all correctly. So we have, identify yourselves, please, and give a report.
Kathy Doherty, I'm with Stephanie Dexter, and we are members of the Park and Rec Selection Committee. And we are just here to give you a report as to what has been happening so far on our committee. The committee has had multiple informative meetings to date, and we have selected a chairman, Matthew Montana. Our vice chair is George Kay. And our members are Paul Mackey, Drew Maybe, Daniel Chavez, Nathan Bernier, and Andy Paterna. The committee felt that we needed to identify a temporary swing space location for Parks and Rec. And we had a wonderful tour of the Old Orchard Hill School with Kate Carter and Darrell from the schools, from the schools. And the committee feels that this would be more than adequate to house the Park and Rec program on a temporary basis until a more permanent solution can be found. Additionally, and probably the best part, is the school is ready now and Parks and Rec can begin moving in anytime. And which would allow the whopping school to be turned over to the Board of Ed even sooner. We have identified three potential sites for the new Park and Rec facility. Two of them are town-owned properties and of course are most favorable. And we are doing research to, there's, we are continuing to do research by the committee and by professionals to identify what would be the most appropriate.
And we'll continue that on the council agenda this evening is a request to waive competitive bidding for higher and higher colliers to be the owner's rep for this potential project. Colliers has been the owner's rep for all of the elementary schools and is familiar with the needs of South Windsor. The committee hopes to have full support of the council with this request. The committee will also be setting up some tours of other town Park and Rec facilities to get a better understanding of the types of space needed to run our programs. And then finally, we have settled on a meeting date and time. Took a little while, but we have. And it's going to be the second Monday of every month at 6:30 PM. Meeting room yet to be determined. We guess we need to have some sort of recording. And that's a struggle. But any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. And we look forward to coming across that resolution this evening. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something real quick, because I think the ladies mentioned it, but I think it's important to bring a little bit more attention to it. The recommended proposal to move to Old Orchard Hill is a, is a temporary location, and it's a temporary solution. So in order for it to remain temporary, we need to actually have a plan in place and a direction that we're moving to. Because if we were to move to Old Orchard Hill on a permanent basis, there would be an exponential amount of resources and funding and other things that the town would need to put out in order to use that as a public facility on a permanent basis. We can get away by using it as a temporary solution. So that's why, that's a location for a temporary solution, and we're searching for a more permanent solution. So the idea is that once Park and Recreation does move into Old Orchard Hill, we will have the direction for what that permanent solution will be and we'll be working towards getting there. So I just wanted to draw a little bit more attention to that to make sure everybody understood.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Does anyone have any questions? Deputy Mayor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your report. So you mentioned that there were three other places that you were considering?
There are three. What the commission did is we looked at the spaces that are available, that, land that is available in South Windsor that would be large enough to be able to house a Park and Rec facility. And there were three that were identified. And if you ask me the three, I'm going to tell you, we talked about so many that I don't want to narrow it down here, because I could say the wrong thing. And I don't have it written down. But, but we are trying to get, that's part of what Colliers, if that is approved tonight, could help us, because there's a lot of other considerations, like the type of land, the type of soil, is it, is the soil good to build on, things like that. And then we're going to narrow it down further, is kind of the understanding of the committee.
Let me follow, Madam?
Go ahead.
So with that said, and I appreciate that, trust you me, you get it written down, forget about it.
Yes, right. Exactly. Exactly.
So you need a new facility by July 1st, 2023. I'm assuming that the committee, even outside of Colliers International, has, notwithstanding, there are three top pieces? Like the three top, if you had your druthers, and you could tell Collier, hey, we want to go there, if everything is equal, you guys already have like your top three places that you would like to be?
Well, one of the things is, we have to be sure that if the property was purchased by referendum, that it was purchased for this purpose. And if not, then it has to kind of be sold back and we have to go and start all over. So this is some of the, you know, intricacies of town-owned land at this point. But I think we've done quite a bit in just a couple of meetings. And there'll be more reports, I'm sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, ladies, for coming in this evening, giving us your report. We appreciate you. I appreciate your report. And moving on, we have, would you like to take Carolyn? Or would you like me to? Would you like me to do it? Or you? Okay. We have the Director of Wood Memorial Library and Museum, Carolyn Venn here this evening with some fantastic news and to report about. And it's great to see you.
You too. Carolyn Venn, 101 Rugby Lane. If you're not familiar, Nawashi Village is South Windsor's newest museum. It's owned and operated by the Friends of Wood Memorial Library, and it's a permanent outdoor of indigenous life. It's set on almost a wooded acre of land directly behind Wood Memorial Library and features a classroom-sized Satchel's House, two Wigwams, a Three Sisters Garden, lined woodland trails, community gathering space, and a wetland overlook. Nawashi Village, like the wood, is where history, nature, and the arts come alive. And more than a quarter of the project's construction spending was paid directly to Native Americans or tribal reservations. And we continue to include local indigenous peoples to share their cultural heritage and modern challenges. In our inaugural year in 2021, we welcomed more than 1,000 people from the region. And school field trips have already started to expand beyond South Windsor to include Talon Public Schools and later this very week, Crack. But now I have some really good news, which is that recently my staff and I and some of our board members attended a reception at the Connecticut Historical Society, where we received a state award for Nawashi Village by the Connecticut League of History Organizations. Ten awards were presented this year in only eight Connecticut towns. And Nawashi Village specifically was recognized as a, quote, "an exemplary model of best practice in the thoughtful interpretation of indigenous history." But that's also not all that happened to us that night. Once each year's award winners are selected, the organization's state legislators are notified by CLHO staff. And we were surprised that we were the only organization that night to receive an official citation from the Connecticut General Assembly, introduced by Senator Anwar and Representatives Delnecki and Curry. And as a, as someone who lives and works in South Windsor, I just think it's wonderful that we, anyway it would, always receive so much support from both our local and state legislators, which is wonderful. I want to read to you quickly, because it was particularly special that they included this in here. Obviously, the citation was in recognition of our state award. But it also notes that the Podunk or Nawas tribe who lived in South Windsor referred to their homeland as Nawashi, or place between rivers. And in their honor, Nawashi Village is their namesake. This site is an educational experience for all ages. Native peoples from varying tribes and those are there to educate visitors and to share tribal stories and their histories. We had an abundance of publicity last year, and I can't, of course, not mention that one of our favorite native educators for some time is Little Hawk, also known as Mayor Pendleton. So thank you. If you have not been out to Nawashi Village, we open for the season on Connecticut Open House Day, she's mad at me for that, on June 11th. So we hope to see you then and throughout the rest of the season. I also have packets of the nomination packet with some of the publicity samples and letters of support that we received for all of the town council members and the town manager, which I'll give to the clerk. Thank you very much.
Good job. And I think we've been friends there for 27 years. I've been teaching there. It's a great thing. Great thing. So thank you, Ms. Venn. I appreciate you coming and I appreciate what you do for the town of South Windsor.
Thank you.
And now, does anyone else have any communications from liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible to the council? Any other reports? Okay, I'll give a report from the Patriotic Commission. I attended the Patriotic Commission last week, last Monday, and they're very, very busy. They are, there will be a Memorial Day Parade this year. There will be Armed Forces Day, Armed Forces Celebration this year, picnic in the park. They are busy working on the essays and the posters that the children have submitted to in picking their winners. And Veterans Day will also take place. So they've been very busy with all their festivities and getting the flags ready to put up on Main Street. It's just an exciting time. Oh, and the banner program, to have the veterans, the banners that will be flying at the community center. And also, here at Town Hall, it's pictures of the veterans that are still living within our community. And they go to a certain range, and they had 24, I believe, and 22 of them were sponsored. Now, all 24 are sponsored. And then the banner gets taken down and presented to the veteran. So it's a really neat thing to honor the veterans that we have presently in our community. Is there any other, no one else? Okay. We'll be moving on to item number 10, reports from committees. Is there any reports from committees? I'll give a report that the personal committee will be meeting this evening in executive session. And that's it. That's the only committee that I'm on that will give a report. And now we're moving on to, glasses back on, 11A, first readings, we have none. 11B, second reading, we have none. 11C, miscellaneous, we have none. Item 12 is unfinished business, we have none. Item 13 is new business, which is a discussion item that I've asked Mr. John Caldwell, the Superintendent of the Parks Department, to be here to discuss with us about the monarch butterfly presentation, please. And if you notice, there's something special about him this evening. It's going, and he went out of his way to do this. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. By the way, the tie is compliments from Jen. She, she found it on Amazon and made me wear this.
Great job, Jen. It's a beautiful monarch butterfly tie. I love it.
I asked my wife tonight what's going to match this tie, and she said nothing. But we thought it was pretty appropriate. Actually, the reason we're here is because we're talking about the mayor's pledge for the monarch butterfly, which Jen will speak on briefly, and then I'll do a short presentation, an hour, hour and a half, on the monarch butterfly.
All right. So let me get started, so we can get ready for that. So again, my name is Jen Filer. I'm the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, and just want to thank you for taking the National Wildlife Federation Mayor's Monarch Pledge. And if I can take a minute and just read the pledge summary, that would be great. So, South Windsor is a town in Connecticut with a population of approximately 26,000. This old agricultural town is snuggled next to the Connecticut River and is home of the South Windsor Parks and Recreation Department, which oversees over 700 acres of open space, which includes many parks and two successful community gardens. The town of South Windsor has committed to saving the pollinators with the signing of the mayor's monarch pledge and looks forward to engaging residents with more education and providing pollinator habitat in town. And there's three action items that we are working towards with this pledge. We are going to be engaging with our community gardens to urge them to plant those native milkweeds and nectar-producing plants. We've been working very closely with our Parks Department and Public Works as far as for keeping, identifying opportunities to maintain mowing programs. So John, make sure that he doesn't mow until after that second hard frost. We also want to create a community art project to enhance and promote the monarch and pollinator conservation, as well as cultural awareness and recognition. So those are three of them. And we just want to also mention, thank you so much to the Down to Earth Garden Club, who's helped maintain and provide those pollinator gardens that we already have. We have one at Nevers, we have one at Major Donnelly, and then also at, also near Chief Ryan. So two at Nevers, one near the Boundless Playground. Sorry, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And then one towards Chief Ryan Way. So just thank you for taking that pledge with America's largest conservation organization. And we're very excited to work with you this year to make sure that we hit all those action items.
Go ahead, Mr. Caldwell.
The one at, the one at Donnelly Property is, Major Michael Donnelly Property is actually taken care of by Troop 389 of the Boy Scouts, I believe. And that's been there for, for a long time. I'm not exactly sure. It's probably 10 years plus. The Boundless Playground one that Jen spoke of is actually also a sensory garden. So that is, that doubles as the butterflies and also a sensory garden. So, that is, that doubles as the butterflies and also a sensory garden. So, your quick little lesson on monarch butterflies tonight, and I now know more about monarch butterflies than I have in my entire life. But the monarch butterfly, this is a butterfly that you learned about, most of us learned about in third grade, that emerged from a chrysalis in your classroom and being considered, as listed now, as almost under the endangered species. So, monarch butterflies is similar to the pollinators. It's super important, you know? The monarch butterfly is actually a little, little bit more unique than I thought. As one of the bigger pollinators that we have, the monarch butterflies is, are an iconic species, and they're easily recognized by their large and vibrant orange wings, such as my tie represents. Monarchs carry out one of the most incredible cross continental journeys in the animal kingdom. They travel upwards of 3,000 miles from Canada to the northern United States of omal fir forests in the mountains of Mexico. Unfortunately, the monarch butterfly's migration has declined, and work needs to be done to protect and sustain the future population. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services is announcing that the listing of monarch butterflies will be on the Endangered Species Act and is warranted but preclude. How can you help? I know that's what you're thinking. So, the best way to help is, as a plant that, I don't usually like to say, "Let's plant weeds," because that's not who I am. I'm a grass guy. But the mayor tells me all the time to plant more weeds. The milkweed is probably the most popular of the monarch butterfly. When they, when they make their commute, they have to stop and feed, and they have to get energy to make that commute. And the milkweed is their most, is their favorite food. It's like me with chocolate. But one of the things that has happened is a lot of farming has taken over, and because of that, they've cleared more and more farmland because there's less and less farmland. So, the milkweed that was part of it that used to surround the outside forestry area is now declined substantially. And, and that, that is what they need is, there's other plants, and I could go through a list of them, but milkweed happens to be the most, their favorite. Absolutely.
All right. Just so, so it's actually the fourth generation monarch that takes the trip down to Mexico. So, while, when they first migrate back from the mountains of Mexico where they're deforestation, but that's not a problem. Our problem is here providing that milkweed. So, it's the fourth generation, so we need to provide enough milkweed for them to get through each of those generations. And then they fly up to 100 miles a day to do the 3,000-mile trip. And that actually is just by the energy that they've collected from that milkweed. I'm sorry, I just wanted to, because it's pretty cool. Like, they get to travel, like, I would love to travel 100 miles a day. But just the fact that we're able to really offer these pollinators what they need, you know, with the, the climate change and the extreme weather patterns that we're having. The fact that we're taking a stand on this is, is pretty exciting. So, I'm happy to be part of it. Sorry, John, go ahead.
So, one of the things that we discussed this morning in our crew meeting was that I was going to, with Jen, do this presentation. And one of the, one of the guys is actually Dave, the Parks Manager, Turkington. He said that quite a few years ago, he was working at Rotary Baseball Field with one of our retired employees, and that they actually stopped working because hundreds and hundreds of butterflies flew over them. So, that happened at Rotary Baseball Field, and they said how impressive that was. And I'm sure this is just coincidental, but one of the government goals is to preserve 2.3 million acres of forested area and farmland. And the person that's in charge of all this is the Program Manager for the Energy Resource Center is Iris Caldwell. So, she's no relation to me, and, but I just thought that was kind of coincidental. But one of the things the Parks Department plans on doing, and we are going to look into the milkweed. We're going to put some around the borders of the community gardens. We're going to look at some other areas that we can probably plant some more of over in the Whopping Park area. Because as you know, as, as what we've done, and we've done it for a lot of years, is that we do not mow most of our large open spaces until after, as Jen spoke of, the second hard frost. So, we're going to look at putting some areas like that in there and some other nectar plants that would help not only the butterflies, but the bees and all the other pollinators that we have on this earth that are so important to our environment. So, with that, that's my hour and a half. And thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
I, I appreciate what you guys have done to, to make this happen and come to fruition. And your last statement that you just made to plants, plants that are going to help our pollinators, not just the butterflies, but also the bees, because that's extremely important. And just to let you know, I do have milkweed growing in my front yard, and I do end up with seeds, so, from the pods. So, you're more than welcome. And the milkweed is where they lay the, the eggs underneath on the bottom of the leaves, and that's where the caterpillars come, and they're beautiful, big caterpillars. And then they go into, it's just beautiful. So, I'll share my seeds with you.
Don't spill them on my nice grass, though.
Oh, I won't, I won't. But you know, me, your grass, me weeds. So, it's just, it's a fantastic thing that we're doing this, because I knew, I knew about them and their, their flight. And their flight is extremely long and very difficult to do. And I'd like to do 100 miles a day, however, not with those wings. No, thank you. But I just want to thank you for the hard work and energy and effort that you're putting into this and, and helping our environment. And that's, that's really important. Does anyone have any questions or comments? There you go, Counselor Gamble.
Well, now you've piqued my interest about the monarch butterfly, seeing the tie, and the presentation was spectacular.
It's all yours when we're done.
So, I didn't know about the journeys that they make and all that kind of stuff. So, other than the fact that we don't want to, you know, be the cause of a species like this going extinct, what, you say they're pollinators. What, what do they add to the value of the ecosystem and, you know, the environment?
So, essentially, what the pollinators do with our flowering plants is they help the ecosystem survive. So, any farmland or any plant producing needs to be pollinated. So, having these pollinators allows us to eat healthy food. It's actually, I forget how many.
For our gardens? Are pollinators important to our gardens?
It's essentially like.
And our fruit trees and plants? And, go ahead.
Over 150 different food sources is from the pollinators. So, without them, we won't have that food source. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to present that.
Yeah, I do have two other quick things. I know that you're going to be presenting a proclamation in the near, near future. I spoke with Scott and you about it tonight. And the other thing is, June 20th to the 26th is actually National Pollinators Week. So, that's another thing that we can discuss. I mean, that we'll be, you know, looking at, not discuss.
Is there, you, you mentioned that there's a list of plants, but you're not going to go through them. Is there any way that you could put that on the park site? So, folks?
I actually have them with all the photos and everything with me, so.
Can you put that on the town website so folks can see them if they want to plant them in their gardens? That, I appreciate that. And then the 20 through the 26th, maybe we can do something within town with plants or people and, you know?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Maybe a local beekeeper?
Yeah. Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you. Excellent. Appreciate the report. Inquiry in regards to the finances, is this something that's part of your budget? Or is this something that we're going after grant money for? Because obviously butterflies don't grow on trees. So, how is this paid for?
So, essentially, a few of the, a couple of the pollinator gardens are actually managed. I mentioned Down-to-Earth Garden Club. So, they help manage and plant those pollinator gardens for us. And as far as for donations for other seeds, that's what we're going to be looking for, because there's a lot of conservation movement in the direction of helping preserve those pollinators. So, it hasn't necessarily been put into a budget line item, but these are things that.
Interesting. Just throwing that out there. That would be nice to see under Parks and Rec Budget Line Item.
Oh, I think so. Absolutely.
That's what happens when you keep on, there you go.
This was given to us after this year's budget, but it'll definitely be in next year's budget.
But the budget hasn't been approved yet, so it's still negotiable, you know? Yeah.
Excellent.
Is there any way that we could do a pollinator garden on all of our town properties? Town Hall, library, the annex, the police department?
No.
No? Okay.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
I think if we had other groups like the Down-to-Earth Garden or those Cub Scout that are willing to step up and help us, that it would be much more manageable, especially if we're talking about budget and we want to watch our time, you know, as far as for getting them out there. So, that would be very helpful.
I mean, it doesn't have to be big. It can be a small pollinator garden. It doesn't have to be huge, you know, a few plants, something. Maybe we can go in that direction of pollinator plants. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. I see that big smile on your face.
It's the first time I ever got to say no up here, so. But we'll do it. Try. We'll try.
All right. We'll work on it, right?
All right, yes.
We'll work on it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work and effort in this. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on. 13B, A Resolution Concerning the Approval of the Park and Recreation Facility Space Needs Analysis and Bid Process Approval Waiver. Counselor Evans is not here, so Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the South Windsor Town Council appreciates the value of our Parks and Recreation Department and further recognizes the need for a more suitable facility to accommodate the growing number of residents that benefit from high-quality programs and community spaces. And whereas the South Windsor Town Council acknowledges that the Parks and Recreation Department needs a new facility by July 1st, 2023, and that further delay will negatively affect, or impact, excuse me, the timetable to properly investigate, develop, and budget a new parks and recreation facility. And whereas the design and engineering firm, Colliers International, has offered the town of South Windsor a contract to conduct a comprehensive facility needs analysis study that includes site assessments, test fits, and soil samplings at potential sites, along with project budget ranges and public outreach support. And whereas, Colliers International has a proprietary understanding of the town of South Windsor due to their involvement with the South Windsor Public School System, and it is believed that it would be in the town's best interest to waive the competitive bidding process for the Parks and Recreation Facility Space Needs Analysis. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council authorizes the waiving of the competitive bidding process for the Parks and Recreation Facility Space Needs Analysis and approves Colliers International to conduct a comprehensive facility space needs analysis study that includes site assessments, test fits, and soil samplings at potential sites, along with project budget ranges and public outreach support.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor King. Is there a second? Thank you. And should that, is there any discussion? I have one. Should that say test kits or fits?
I think it's fits, because what they're doing, yeah, so there, since there's multiple locations, one of the things they're doing is they're looking at those locations to make sure that there's enough actual space, usable space on the site to fit the actual facility. So, it's a test fit of this facility.
I see. Thank you. And Mr. Maniscalco, would you like to give us a breakdown of this, please?
Yeah, certainly. So, at the direction of the committee, we reached out to Colliers International and asked them to kind of put together a proposal. They did come back with a proposal. We were kind of trying to figure out whether it was going to be below or above the actual bidding requirements for the town. Unfortunately, it did come back above the bidding requirements of the town charter, which is $5,000. The proposal came back at 20. Our plan is to fund this out of our Facilities Department budget. We do have some savings in our Maintenance Contracts line item that will be able to cover the cost of that this year. So, basically, we're going to be using those funds to fund the study. And then, really, at this point, because we are running up against such a tight timeline, I know a lot of people look at it as, you know, you've got a year and I think probably four months or three months at this point. That's a long time, but in the municipal world, that's actually a pretty long, a pretty short amount of time for us to do a lot of the studies and figure everything out. Our hope is to really start putting this plan together, so that way, when we do make that temporary move, we can honestly say we're making a temporary move into Old Orchard Hill, because I do think that we could potentially run some legal liabilities if we make the move into Old Orchard Hill and are not doing it in a temporary fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Any discussion? Counselor Gamble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, it's the last four words of this, and public outreach support. What, what does that mean?
So, I think that's just in the event.
Are they going to be responsible for reaching out to the public to garner support for this plan? Is that what their role in this is?
Yeah, so what it is, is that once they can, once they complete their test fits and, and the committee has chosen this is the, the design that they want to go with, Colliers would come out and they would meet with the public to explain why that one is the one that works and how they got to where they are. That, that's basically what they're talking about.
Okay.
Not like they'd be advocating and that kind of thing. There's nothing of that.
Anything else, Mr. Gamble?
Oh, nope.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. I did do a second, yes, correct? I did do a second? Yes, I did. Thank you over there. Okay. And discussion we had, so all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco, for this. And moving on to 13C, Resolution Concerning the Chief of Police Civil Disobedience Training and Equipment Bid Waiver. Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the town of South Windsor Police Department is an active partner agency within the Capital Region Chiefs of Police Association. And I'm going to assume that's a COPA. Members are currently in the process of equipping and training personnel within the member agencies to be able to safely respond to incidents of civil disobedience within their own community, or to assist other agencies in their response to similar incidents in surrounding communities. And whereas, in order for this initiative to be effective, is imperative that assigned personnel are trained and equipped in the same manner so that they can function in a way that maximizes the safety of the community, event participants, and law enforcement personnel during incidents of civil disobedience. And whereas other COPA agencies have already researched, identified, and procured sets of protective equipment from a vendor within the Capital Region, the aggregate cost of these pieces of protective equipment will exceed the limit set forth locally that requires a competitive bidding process. In addition, Chief Lindstrom recently applied for and received a grant that would allow for the purchase of this protective gear without spending the money from within the general operating budget. And whereas, it is believed that it would be in the town's best interest to waive competitive bidding for the purchase and acquisition cost of the aforementioned protective gear. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby waives the competitive bidding process for this project. And, oop, I was about to keep it moving. And that's it. So, now, therefore, be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby waives the competitive bidding process for this project.
Is there a second? Any discussion, please? Welcome Chief Lindstrom to the meeting this evening to help us understand this. If you would, please. Explain a little bit.
Sure. The, so, in the Police Accountability Act that was passed last summer, the, one of the provisions within that act is for the region to, or the state, in fact, to start to offer an improved training for incidents of civil disobedience. So, the Capital Region Chiefs of Police, or COPA, as we call it, has formed a committee to begin standardized training. You know, what we've found is that our, our, as a region, our best response is going to be, if it's obviously a uniform response, if everyone's on the same page in terms of techniques, strategies, plans, and equipment. So, they've already begun the training process for training area, regional agencies in, in that topic. So, one of the things that has come out of that, obviously, is for everyone to have protective equipment. And in order for everyone to have the same capability and resourcefulness in terms of being a resource to the region, we think it's important for them all to be equipped similarly or identically. So, some of the departments have already bought their equipment. I'm waiting to do that because of the $5,000 threshold set forth in Charter. I need to go out, otherwise, without a waiver, I'd have to go out to bid. And then I would think I would run the risk of not being able to get equipment that aligns with what other agencies have had. So, knowing that this was coming, every, every few years, there's a JAG grant that's offered, and I applied for that back in late winter, and that was approved. So, we have the money. It won't be taxpayer money in the traditional sense. And there are some other things that will, that can be purchased with the grant money, but that's a large part of its earmark for this project. And then we can get that and continue the training and be ready to, to respond not only locally, but to neighboring agencies and regional agencies and communities.
Does anyone have any questions for the chief? I do. How much grant is the grant that you were awarded?
The, the total amount is 25,000 for us.
Fantastic. And, Mr. Maniscalco, is this a line item in our budget because it's? Because it states here that without spending the money from within the general operating budget, is this a line item in our budget?
No, it's not currently a line item in your budget. Essentially, that's a reference to the idea that it is a, it is grant funds that you're not having to spend as a result.
Okay, cause it, this, this sentence makes it sound as though it's already a line item in being spent in, within our budget. Without spending the money.
If I may, Madam Mayor, when I, when I did the grant, it was contemporaneous to my preparation of the budget. So, I rolled the dice, being confident that the grant would be approved. It's not a competitive grant in a traditional sense. So, being confident that the grant would be approved, I knew to a pretty high degree that I didn't, a pretty high degree of certainty that I didn't have to include it as a line item. So, I rolled the dice and didn't put it in as a line item, knowing that this would, this would come and I'd be able to, and move forward with grant funds.
So, you did not put it in the budget as a line item?
Correct.
I like that, okay. So, I wanna make it, allow the purchase of this protective gear without spending the money from within the general operating budget. Wonder if we could word that differently to make it sound as though it's not already in the general operating budget and we're spending the money? Cause that's how I read it. I don't, I don't.
I think that, you know, we have line items in the budget for department equipment and uniforms and clothing and things like that. And that's probably if we had to in a pinch, where we would try to find that money from, but we would also be cutting off our nose despite our face. We'd then be, we'd have less availability to buy uniforms and, you know, things that get damaged and need to be replaced or, you know, sometimes our pants don't fit from year to year, so you need new pants. So, if we can forego having to tap into that account by using the JAG, the JAG grant money, and that's what it was applied for also, is for this project.
Right, so are you, what I'm trying to suggest or say is that we maybe should change this to say that the money is not a line, I, I mean.
Can I, can I just read to you the, the entire sentence? Cause I think if you read the sentence in, in its entirety, it does make sense.
Okay, go ahead.
So, it says, "In addition, Chief Lindstrom recently applied for and received a grant that would allow for the purchase of this protective gear without spending the money from within the general operating budget." The only thing I would suggest maybe you could change is rather than say, "the money", spending any money from within?
Right, that's what I was gonna say. Cause when you're saying "the money", it's identifying it as a line item and it's not presently in there as a line item. So, if you say "any money", that makes it clear. Is everyone acceptable to that friendly amendment? To change the word from "the" to "any"?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you. That's much better, okay. And that's why, cause I wrote "line item?", question mark? Cause that's the way it made it sound. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry I didn't ask my question before, it just came to me as you were speaking. So, this is the second bid waiver of the night. And for legitimate reasons, I mean, this is, you know, in my mind, a perfect example of why we would do this. It just seems like our bid waiver threshold is a, is a little unrealistic, five, $5,000. I don't know if, you know, we could get anything of value for that much money. And so, I'm just questioning, do we need to look at increasing the threshold of the minimum bid waiver amount so that, you know, you can have some more autonomy to do these kinds of things? But, you know, obviously, keep track of it, you know, in such a way.
Yeah, so that's an item that's actually in our town charter. So, in order to do that, it would be a
I was gonna say.
big process to renovate the town charter. I did have a thought, the other day, I was actually thinking about this exact item. And the challenges sometimes that $5,000 threshold offers. And I was gonna actually have a conversation with the town attorney, hopefully sometime this week, about possibly doing some type of ordinance in addition to the town charter and possibly see if there was some way we could do an ordinance that outlines specific exemptions to that, to that requirement? Because there is the ability to exempt things, as we can see here. So, I'm wondering if maybe if we were to outline it in some type of an ordinance that would already say, like, maybe items from 5,000 to 15,000 could be exempt if the town manager believes it meets these certain criteria. That way, it wouldn't need to come to you. And then maybe from 15,000 to, I don't know, 40,000 could be exempt because it meets these types of criteria. And then 50,000 and above has to come to the town council, something of that nature. Cause I do agree with you, 5,000 at this point is a pretty low number, given the cost of doing business at this point.
I swear this wasn't a setup, I did not, you know, set you up to, you'd already said, you'd already had that conversation.
Yeah, I've kinda been thinking about this, trying to figure it out, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. So, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. And moving on to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Have a good evening if you choose to leave. Thirteen D, a discussion item for the proposed general government budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Mr. Maniscalco, please.
So, I don't, are you looking for me? Do you want me to run through kinda the Budget Working Group results that we have? I believe that are in your packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I believe over the last, well, I know, over the last few weeks, the Budget Working Group has been meeting and has been putting together a number of items that they were thinking about possibly cutting. And basically, that includes the following. So, from the general government, they were considering cutting the Planning and Zoning Commission computers for $13,000, the IT interns for $22,000, the Parks and Recreation Truck for $80,000. They were looking to cut Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency by $1,000, and the engineering interns by $12,000, health insurance by $1,000. They were going to add $4,000 for the council clerk salary, which brings the total change to the general government budget to a decrease of $125,000. They were planning to increase the ECS payment reven, ECS revenues by $100,000 and then also make a reduction of $125,000 to the Board of Education budget for an overall reduction in the request for taxes of $350,000, which would result in a mil rate of 38.59, which is a mil rate increase of 1.94%.
Does anyone have any comments about the summary? Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you speak to what the IT interns would have been doing? I know that in this labor market, IT skills are hard to come by. And, you know, you guys have a very robust IT infrastructure here where there are a lot of opportunities for, you know, then things going on. I don't know, it just, it just seems like an arbitrary just thing to do. And if, I, I don't know if anybody could speak to more about the IT stuff.
Sure, I know Mr. Roberts is here and I'm sure he could provide a better insight into what the interns are currently doing for the town, so.
Good evening. The interns supplement our workforce, so we get them from time to time. Right now, we actually have one helping us rewrite all of our IT policies. We actually worked with the Capital Region Council of Governments just prior to COVID to create a IT set of policies that the whole region could use and would follow current standards. So, they were boilerplate template. So, we have the intern going through and looking for everything specific about South Windsor and modifying that. So, that's what one intern's doing because they have a medical condition where they can't actually come here. So, they're still working remote, which has been very helpful. The other intern is here on a regular basis for about 22 and a half hours, and he's been helping out with computer replacements, so rolling out new computers, bumping down the old ones, working on learning how to do Alien Vault, which is a product that we have here. So, not only do we do it with interns as far as like accomplishing tasks, but we give them opportunities to learn so that ultimately down the road, when they go out and get their new job beyond South Windsor, they have actual marketable skills. So, we put them on different projects like Alien Vault or Firewalls and stuff like that, and they get to learn under the direction of our staff. So, they supplement in almost anything. And in some days, they could be actually planning to do something, but today, we pulled them up to look at an audio piece of equipment in the Madden Room that wasn't working. So, they are assisting in troubleshooting why that recording device wasn't working. So, they're very beneficial all the time. I would say there is a planned approach, but emergencies do happen. So, we pull them and they support the staff on a regular basis.
So, so this $22,000 cut to the intern budget will mean, no, next year, you will not have two interns?
If, if it's cut, my understanding is that the funding wouldn't be there for them, yes.
Yeah, we'll be laying off, you have one current one?
I have two.
You have two current ones that are partway through their process, so they'd be laid off.
They'd be laid off?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks, I just.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Not seeing any? Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco, for that. And moving on, we now have.
I think, just really quickly, I think it would be important. We do have our special meeting next week. I believe next week at your special meeting. From timing perspective, you, the, you have to approve the Board of Ed budget by the 16th of May, I believe. And then you would need to approve the general government budget by the 22nd. So, the 9th will give us enough time in the event that something really goes wrong. But I think overall, you know, we should be in a pretty good spot for the 9th to be able to approve some type of budget. I would hope.
I would hope too. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Thirteen E, Resolution Approving a Refund of Taxes for Four South Windsor Taxpayers. Councilor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a refund of property taxes for South Windsor taxpayers, the total of said refunds being $10,994.20, and as more fully described in attached Exhibit A.
Is there a second? Okay. And that will be reflected as $10,994.20. And is there any other discussion?
So, the numbers match now?
That's on there too.
I'm sorry, what?
Go ahead.
I just said, did you make the numbers match? Cause they don't match, the exhibit doesn't match.
Correct, the, Mr. Maniscalco?
Yeah, I think we wanna follow the numbers on the back of the memo, on the back of the memo, not which are the actual report of the taxes, not the, not the one in the memo.
So, he changed, he changed the resolution?
To match the numbers on the back, yes.
Alrighty.
Yes.
I'm good.
994, yes, $10,994.20, yes. So, is there, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to passionate ordinance. And we don't have one at this time. Public input on any matter, item 15. Is there any public input on any matter, item number 15? When you could be recognized by me and you give your name and last, your first name and address and avoid personal attacks or imputing or alleging any improper motive? And the limit is five minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Jeff Delilah, Town Engineer. I just would like to speak, have an opportunity to speak to the engineering intern, if I may?
Okay.
So, just as Scott said, the engineering intern helps us greatly in the engineering department. They have worked on stormwater inspections and projects. They've worked on sidewalk inspections, sidewalk maps, sidewalk projects. We get great value from our engineering interns that we have for the, as long as we've had them. So, to put it in perspective, we have $12,000 budgeted for our engineering intern. That gives us about 750 hours of work from that person. If we were to hire a consultant to do 750 hours of work for us, which we would have to do to get this work done, it would cost us at least $75,000. So, that's more than six times the cost or the value we get from this engineering intern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is there any other public input on any matter? Anyone else from the public like to speak on public input on any matter? And going three times, anyone else like to speak on public input on any matter? Not seeing anyone from the public, we'll move on to item 16, Communications from the Council. Does anyone have any communications from the council? Not seeing any, we'll be moving on to item number 17, which is Executive Session. Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that we go into Executive Session inviting Town Manager Michael Maniscalco, the Assistant Town Manager Ms. Perry, and Assistant Town Manager Mr. Roberts, as well as, do we need Mr. Scott Nolan as well? See deemed personnel necessary for the possible purchase of the development rights for the town pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-20B7, the Raymond Burden property, or to discuss the personnel matter which is involving the town manager's performance evaluation.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries. And we will adjourn from the Executive Session, everyone. Please be safe and have a good evening.